Sure, I'll take your questions.
So, a specific question related to the language around the overlay district designation, requiring architectural and site plan review by the commission as it relates to our property that we own, which is the Tribune building in downtown, being part of the overlay district. So, my question is, design is completed on that building, the site plan is completed, part of that has been funded by WEDC through a direct grant from the city. And how does that play out in the future with a new zone or plan being approved now?
Adam, I'll allow you to answer sort of that two-step question that comes up as certainly introduced, the new zoning code based upon projects that are in any projects, as a number of them I think you've identified.
Sure, yeah, I can answer it in general generality. In general, once a new zoning code is adopted, that is the law of the land, any projects that start after that have to comply with the new regulations. To be vested or to have vested rights, my understanding of laws is basically unless there's a building permit that has been issued, you're not vested. So, for example, for the Tribune project, although the site design has been done, no permitting has been done through the city. So, that means any, once that process takes place, it will have to comply with the zoning code. So, any of the land uses proposed within the Tribune would have to comply with, the proposal is B1 zoning district, and then the overlay district would apply to that project. So, the site plan and the architectural review process that is outlined within the chapter 14, I believe it is, the overlay district would apply. So, that process would have to take place, and that site plan and architectural review is basically more of a technical review that would come before the planning commission in this body at that time, and would need that approval.
And so, the city is very familiar with what the design is, and the completion of the design, and the purpose and use of the building. So, what kind of reassurance would we have that coming through a plan commission, there's not going to be a significant, a request for a significant redesign of something that was driven by the community?
So, chapter 14. Here. So, within the downtown overlay district, probably the major question you have is 111408, which is building design. So, to go through that site plan or that architectural review, an argument has to be made, that it complies with basically one through 12. And if you remember when we were going through this process as a commission on the downtown overlay district, there's, some of it was a little more qualitative or quantitative, I never remember which way, but it was very prescriptive. It was a little more technical language, so it said you had to basically do this. And the commission had asked that some of that language almost be softened, so it's more in general, so these are the themes that we're looking for, or this is the general design we're looking for. So, things like building materials, so it should be consistent with the area, and it lists some of them. Four-sided architecture, meaning that you're designing all four sides, you're not just having a pretty front on it, and the other sides are just cement block or something like that. So, all of those, going through it, I mean, in my opinion, from what I have seen on the Tribune building, if I were to review the site plan and the architectural review right now, I wouldn't have a problem saying that what the Tribune building proposes would comply. I mean, it's a lot of glass, it's preserving the brick architecture that was there before. The site design, obviously, is a little, there's no landscaping requirements in the B1 district, so what landscaping you have there is a bonus, I guess, it's not required by the code. So, I guess, in short, being on the spot, I would say it wouldn't be an issue, but ultimately it would be up to the planning commission, just like any other site plan or architectural review. Ultimately, they would have to say that, yes, they agree that it meets these standards. So, I don't know if that fully answers your question or not, but that's how I would answer it.
Further question or comment? Kelly?
Not at this time.
Okay.
I am here, Susan Peeth, representing the Neveglor Foundation, and we had submitted a letter in the opening session of the public hearing with our concerns. I just wanted to thank you for taking a good look at the bullet points, and we know that you have made some adjustments that we had been hoping you would make. But to reaffirm, we're still concerned about the other bullet points in that letter, which is a part of the packet that I believe was submitted to the public today.
Do you have further questions?
And that letter is attached to the minutes, that were part of the packet. If you need to reiterate, I don't know if this is in there.
That's the same one we got asked.
Correct.
Are there any other comments anyone in the public wishes to make, as we go to Adam's comments for a minute?
Yeah, so, in your packets, there were two main amendments. One was an updated zoning code cap, and the other was basically a text, a whole section of the text changes. So, at the previous meeting, I provided a memo that I went line by line by line through. So, rather than going through that exact memo, the reason we provided that struck-out and underlined document was so that you could see those changes as they relate to the code. So, basically, those, that code incorporates all those changes I recommended at the last meeting. So, I wasn't going to go through each and every one again. I was hoping you'd review that information. If there are any concerns on specific ones, I would like to discuss those, that we can get a consensus. And then ideally, just for cleanliness sake, I would ask that basically some sort of action be taken on that whole laundry list of amendments, whether it's just that red line version that was presented, if all those changes are acceptable, that the motion is made to, that the final zoning code incorporate those changes, and again, we can go through them as needed. The second item was a zoning map. So, the map that was included in your packet incorporated, again, all those changes that I had recommended from the last meeting, so those were incorporated. And then, if there is time tonight, and there is interest, I did have our GIS person taking some information from the consultant, compared our zoning map to the comprehensive plan map, and tried to identify some discrepancies between the two. So, really trying to identify some issues where, let's say, it was shown as residential on the comprehensive plan, and it's zoned commercial now, or vice versa, just trying to figure out some of those changes. So, as a result, I do have a few more recommended changes on the zoning code, or on the zoning map. And then, I did receive some communication today on a couple other just larger zoning areas that I would present to the commission for consideration. So, that's okay, I'll go through those.
Sure, please.
All right, and I apologize, this is my awesome, marked-up version. So, one of them, I noticed, is down in the Walmart area. And again, the small map that I handed out tonight incorporates these changes that I'm going to go through. But there is a, I believe it's the Sleep Inn, and then there's a small, I call it like a mini mall, that's got GameStop, it's got Illness Call in it. Both of those, for whatever reason, are zoned residential on their current zoning, which makes no sense, they're both commercial uses. Some of them are on A Street, which is a commercial corridor, so I would recommend basically changing those to commercial.
They're changed on here, though?
Yeah, they're changed on that small version that I handed out tonight, the version that has today's dates in the bottom right-hand corner. I noticed, for whatever reason, there was a residential lot in this area that didn't have a zoning. So, I'm guessing that was more of a drafting error. It is a home, so I would recommend that be zoned R2, consistent with the other areas. The portion of the airport that the city owns, it's very small, but there are hangers on that property, it's zoned residential on our current zoning. So, again, that's one that, in my mind, it would make more sense to be zoned institutional, which allows airport uses. Up off of, let's see, this is Pepper, I believe?
Yep.
The far west end, again, that was just a small drafting error, there's one residential lot that wasn't zoned anything, so to be consistent, that should be zoned R2, to be the same as the other ones. So, let's see, let me, I'll check my colorblindness to make sure. And then, all the other ones were the old ones. So, it would be these four changes that I would recommend, in addition to what I had proposed last month. And then, the communication I received today focused on some areas downtown. One is the block where Moravian Church is currently located, if you're familiar with that area on the west side, goes to Moravian Church, and then there's a series of homes south of there. Sometime in the past, it's always been zoned commercial since I've been here, I'm guessing at some point the city decided that maybe that should be zoned commercial, expecting that the central business district would expand. That hasn't happened, the church is still there, all the homes are still there, some of the homes are actually in good condition, and nice homes that aren't in need of being redeveloped, I guess, in my mind. So, the question is, should we keep that block zoned commercial, or would it make sense to, for example, show the church as the institutional district, and the homes as R2, so that their uses are preserved, so that they're not non-conforming, so that if they need to maintain and things are not running into legal issues? So, that's one block. Another one that, and I think this change happened in the 70s, I'm guessing, but the whole stretch from Birch Street on the north, down to Mead Street on the south, between Second and Third Street, basically this stretch right here, is zoned R3 on our current zoning map. There are a couple of apartment buildings in there, but also some of the nicest houses in the entire city are along that stretch. And again, they're facing that same situation, if we want to preserve those houses, they really should be zoned R2 versus a multifamily district, which doesn't allow single-family homes. So, I guess, what I would ask for maybe consideration is that if there are apartment buildings, we would keep those R3, so they are allowed to remain, but if they're not apartment buildings, that it be shown as R2. And then, the third one is probably a remnant from when it was still part of the commercial district, but the south end of Veterans Park is currently zoned B1, and then the north park is, north part of the park is zoned parkland. And again, that's reflective of what our current zoning has in place, but since that is parkland, I don't see Veterans Park being turned back into commercial anytime soon without a riot from the community, so it probably makes sense to rezone that to park as well. So, those are the three that I did receive today as well, on top of these four. So, we'll just ask for the commission's consideration on those items as well.
Any further comment from consultants or the public at this time? Or questions?
So, is the intent to take action at some point during the meeting, because do we have a quorum?
We do have a quorum.
Okay.
We do have a quorum. So, our intent would be to move into item number, would be to close the public hearing today and to move into item number two, which would be action.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have four people present. So, we do have a quorum. Apparently, but we have a quorum.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. I was calling today, just to make sure.
There was one change in the text that was included in your packet, it's on page 10. And when this was included in the staff report, there was a comment made, do we want to limit the number of non-resident people on the plan commission? There was no recommended number, and so we're looking at section 11.303, sub C. And when we were making that edit, that change, we just put in to allow one non-resident member. But I'm not sure if that was the intent, if you wanted to allow more than one, but that's something that we can talk about.
And our intent would be to talk about those things in part two, when we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Unless you propose doing it differently, and I feel like the public hearing process, what's your intent? Is it? Okay, we'll do it in part two.
Okay, that's great.
Are there other areas that you wanted to call out in the changes? I mean, it's really, I think probably the appeal processes, it seems like they carried through as far as an edit, as I was looking through, it wasn't.
Right.
Anything further for the sake of public hearing?
Just to answer the question, and that has to do with all of the red lines with regard to the appeal process, and why they were all changed to a direct line to the court system as opposed to some internal city appeal.
I think I can answer that. Originally, the proposal that was booked before the planning commission and the council was to move conditional uses from being a council approval to being a final decision of the planning commission. At a joint meeting that was held with the council and the commission, it was determined that council wanted to retain that power, so they are, once again, would be the final saying. So, there wouldn't be another body within the city to appeal to. So, as a result, this table was updated to show that if you do want to appeal, you have to go to the courts. So, that's where the majority of those changes come from.
Which I think we're going to discuss in part two of our piece here tonight. Anything, any further comments or questions, concerns?
I guess I do, if part two is not allowing public comments. So, one would be just requesting that my comments about the Tribune and site design be part of the record of this process, because it is common knowledge in the community that it's completed, that the site design is completed, and that we own that building, and they've been paying property taxes on it for several years to the city. So, that's the first request. And then, the second would be, and this is just a general question about my own understanding, that the plan in general and the zoning is being completed in furtherance of an overarching plan or strategy for economic growth for the city of Wisconsin Rapids, and in particular, downtown. That the zoning that's put in place advances a shared vision or a shared economic strategy for the long-term vitality and sustainability of the city, and importantly, the downtown.
Thank you. Further comment?
With that, I will close the public hearing at 4:50 PM, move on to item number two, which is action on proposed new zoning code and zoning map. Proposed zoning code, which includes a new zoning map as a comprehensive rewrite with changes to procedures, design standards, allowable uses, and bold requirements, which may affect all areas of the city of Wisconsin Rapids. So, there's been a number of aspects of proposed changes and suggestions to this point, and I'm going to attempt to give us a running list of them, so we can maybe work through that agenda. One of which is the red line version of the code that was attached. The obvious ones are the zoning map changes, the future land use map changes, which I understand we have to incorporate into that or not.
No, future land use is not part of this public hearing or action, that will be before the council at 6:00.
Okay, so, we'll just do zoning code, the edits here, and then obviously, any changes that have been advocated for. I know one of the changes, the effective date, is that an issue of the council, or is that an issue of the commission? Well, it is something that I would ask of the commission, I guess, on the final recommendation from this body, is that we do an August 1 implementation date of the new code. We're still working with the consultants on some forms and things, we're expecting to adopt some new fees as well, that are new as a result of what's in the code. So, that just gives me basically a week or two to kind of button up all those final items prior to the new code being in place. So, I don't think, I'm not trying to delay it, definitely, I just want to have a little more time, and that gives me time to sit down with my staff as well. Again, I didn't want to spend too much time on it until we knew what the final document was going to be. So, just asking for basically that the new zoning code, if you do make a recommendation to adopt it, I'm not assuming that you will, but if you do, that it would take effect on August 1. I guess, maybe, let's talk about that right now. I guess, a feeling I have is that a week to account for all of the changes that are in here is pretty aggressive, and I'm just going to ask maybe the consultants if they have an opinion around when you see the adoption date take effect for such a broad change to the code in places you've done business.
Typically, what we see as the effective date is upon publishing. So, when you have a chance to publish it, then it becomes effective, and most typically, that's less than a week.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, any thoughts to that effect?
I would say there's no need to drag it out, so the, whatever the consultants can turn around, and the city can be prepared, there's no need to delay.
Okay, so, that takes care of the effective date, and I think any motion or any changes to that will have to be made in the action. Let's move into the changes that were proposed in the, that were attached in our packets, which I think the first one being 1133, which I see as the citizen appointments. The proposal, or the way it's drafted, was the non-residence area on the commission limited to one. We do have a seven-member commission, there's been some discussion about, which I think the way it's drafted, and I just have to make sure, I'm not assuming the staff member will be pulled off as a member of the commission, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. The city engineer would no longer be a voting member of the commission, they would be a member, but not have a vote.
So, I guess where my mind is going with that is, that provides for a spot for an additional non-resident member of the commission, considering we had a staff member consuming one of the chairs before. So, I would advocate some discussion, expanding that from maybe the one that's proposed to potentially two. It's not a dominant number of the number of commissioners. I guess that's just a thought that I have. Commissioners, any thoughts?
Well, because of that, that we worked with last time, where the commission member from the Park and Rec would not have a vote, right?
Oh, right, that's the other change.
So, you'd be down two.
Yeah.
Voting members.
I hear all the person five citizens.
And again, if we want to have a Park and Rec commission member as a voting member, that change can be made, so that that is clear. And I believe to be a member of the Park and Rec commission, you are a city resident?
Yes.
No, that's a citizen.
Is that, okay.
Yep.
That one's a citizen. So, Sue, you had a staff, you had a comment on that?
Why, no, I had more personal observation versus a staff observation, but I just feel that it should be city, the city planning commission, it should be city residents for the most part, and not 40% of non-residents, if you go up to two if the open, but that's just a personal.
True.
Observation.
Okay. Commissioners, any thoughts on either of the planning commission representative, or the composition of non-residents serving that capacity?
I can understand where the public works director, being that it is a staff member would not be a voting member, but as far as the Park and Rec representative, I would think that would serve as a voting member.
And what was the history, does anybody know the history of the inclusion of a Park and Rec member to the planning commission, especially as a voting member? I mean, is it, what's the intersection between the Park and, trying to understand the connection there, especially if we were to do some things with the Park and Rec commission that have been thrown around over the years?
It's not required by state law, so I'm guessing at some point someone thought that Park and Rec was a large enough part of what happens in the city, that they should be, have a direct connection, but I haven't come across anything other than that.
Okay. And you haven't received any comment?
No, just a discussion, it hasn't occurred here.
Yeah. Commissioners, any other comments, thoughts?
Back to the two that you recommended, the two non-resident. Is that what it would be then?
Yeah, I just offered that as a point of conversation.
But no matter what, this person would have to have a vested interest in the city.
And I think we, that second, the bullet D, it talks, or part D, it talks about when the member moves outside the city or no longer owns property in the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
So, they have to have some sort of ownership in the city?
That was the vested, I think, that was just referenced. But it's not referenced in item C. Oh, yeah, I did, sorry.
Indoor property of Wisconsin Rapids. So, it's not like you're just getting outside community members, these people are.
Property owners.
Yeah, it's not residents from a qualification standpoint, right? Any comments, one way or the other, one or two, you belong to, and then come back to actually what we're, what we're going to decide on these items? Okay. Do you want to move into page 14, does that have anything that needs any explanation?
No, that was just cleaning up my stuff, the way that number comes from.
18, I'm not seeing anything. There's the cleanup on 21 of the chart, that was related to state law changes, that I understood.
State law, and in fact, that we're moving conditional use back to the common council for final decision.
So, let's talk about that, since that was what seemed to be the discussion at the committee of the whole was about, for the joint meeting, I guess, we held with the common council. I retain reservation about that process, that was the council believed, and I think it's probably natural for me to hold that position in conflict with maybe your connotation to what the city council believes, but I guess I'd ask the consultants to re-articulate your belief of why the proposed change was initially put into the, into the plan or the rewrite, and then, as it gets to the question that was raised, well, we don't have an appeal body then within the, in the city, it has to go to a court system decision for appeals, as I understand the way it's written, so.
Right. So, this is a policy question, you know, there's nothing in state statutes that says you have to do it one way or the other. Traditionally, the town board, village board, city council, they always, or typically, retain the right for approving or denying conditional uses. That's historically how it's done. But one of the things that we heard early on was, you know, from developers and, you know, so on and so forth, was if there's any way to kind of streamline the process, it would be helpful in terms of moving along projects, and the one area that we had thought about was, you know, streamlining the conditional use process, so that it would just go before the planning commission, okay? So, instead of being a recommending body, they would be deciding on conditional uses. And, you know, the other part of that discussion was, basically, that's why you have a planning commission in the first place, you know, to take on that role and responsibility, and with that understanding for making those kinds of, you know, actions, okay? So, it was talked about, you know, just having it being a decision of the planning commission, but then we had talked about, well, what happens if somebody doesn't agree? And that's where we added in the step of being able to appeal the planning commission decision to the common council, right? And it kind of went back and forth, and, you know, there's merits on both sides, and again, that's just a policy question.
I think the other, the other point that was brought up at the joint meeting was, because of the public hearing process, being very important for the applicant to rebut any conversation that happens during that public hearing process. that happens during that public hearing process, and sometimes the, the gap between the planning commission and the city council meeting gives the council a chance to hear other comments, which are not part of the public hearing, which they shouldn't, that should be done once the public hearing is done. So that's, that's part of why we kind of organized it the way we did in the draft, is to have a joint, a joint hearing for the conditional use permits, so to minimize that potential for the negative impact of those comments between the meetings.
Okay. Adam, Sue, commissioners, any comments on that particular item? So edited to reflect the outcome, or at least the consensus, we'll call it, at the, at that joint meeting, right?
I still have to process them, so I don't care who makes the final decision.
Right.
Unless you wanna give that power to me? I'm assuming that road is definitely not on the table.
Consultants would recommend highly against.
So the only change from, from the status quo, so to speak, is basically a joint planning commission, planning commission and city council, public hearing for conditional uses.
And simultaneous, the action is retained by the council, so then the public, the commission would adjourn, and the council then would have to consider or continue on with the action at that various, that particular meeting?
Correct. Or they could table it to the next meeting.
Table it, sure.
But here again, you know, once that public hearing is closed, then all discussion is stopped, essentially, so.
In theory.
I was just gonna say.
Right.
Okay. Move on to the, that, we had, right now, that probably takes us through the, a lot of the other ones where, probably just, I, in my mind, at least more cleanup than anything. My point was the 100, 300-foot boundary that was incorporated for notice, back on page 22, we skipped over that. That came as a result of kind of feeling that community members or neighbors weren't being notified for various projects, so it's a lot more expansive of noting notice boundary. Mention that.
There was the addition of B3 district, which was kind of a last minute, well, not last minute, but that was probably two or three meetings ago that the determination was made to add back in the B3 district. So it's just adding that language in back, and that's what's on page 82. There's the tweak on the landscaping that I think I recommended, so reduce the number of landscaping points required for basically parking lot trees. So while it's still substantially more than what we have now, it reduces it a little bit to make it a little bit easier for those larger developments to come by with. And then within the land use table, there isn't, so A2, A5, those pages, I believe that's, because we're again adding the uses for that B3 district, the uses that we're appropriate to be contained within that B3 district.
It's all the same reasonable to me, seeing issue with the touch-up comments. Anybody else? Please, Sue. Did we, most of these prior to some?
Right.
Right, most of these changed?
Came as, yeah, they're basically all reflective of what I had presented last month of the public hearing.
Guess we can move on to the zoning map and come back to this, if there's any further thoughts anyone has, the edits that were recommended by Adam.
Do you need me to go over the changes that I had presented last month, or were those all pretty straightforward and clear?
They're straightforward.
Okay. And then, like I said, there would be the four additional recommendations, and that's a couple of commercial, two kind of residential districts that, for whatever reason, right there, and then the airport property. So those would be my four recommended, and then the three for discussion would be this R3 corridor here, the Maravian Church block, and then Veterans Park. So I don't know if it's easiest to maybe discuss those three so that there's a clear direction on those.
Are there any comments, concerns with the proposed incorporation of changes in those zoning designation that Adam went over?
So the draft date of July 17th, those, that incorporates those four?
These four, correct.
Right.
So if you're okay with those, a motion could be to adopt the July 17th version. The three that you would have to specifically call out in addition to that would be the three down in the downtown area.
The only one I had mentioned, Adam, two that I had mentioned, Adam, earlier, were the reference to Mead Athletic Field Park area where the splash pad is, it's identified as institutional, and we have a park and recreation, it's a separate parcel, it's city property, as well as a separate parcel between the former East Junior High and Witter Field, to the extent that we'd like to identify those as park and recreation. And Adam had said that the, or thought the institution zoning was, was a fit for those areas, but at the same time, they're both park facilities, and I think it's just more of a cleanup thing.
Yeah, that probably makes sense to show those as.
What's the, can you maybe do a brief description of those, I can?
It's the northernmost large, western, western, well, is it western?
The Mead.
The, yeah.
Mead.
Yeah, that's not it.
The school in the upper left corner, quarter, yeah, probably quarter of that block.
And I can zoom in on the map up there.
I just needed a description for my notes.
And then the other one being Witter Field, which?
All right, so this is basically Mead, so Mead Elementary is here, and then what the mayor referencing is basically this chunk of it is where this splash pad and other recreational uses are. And then Witter Field, this is former, again, and then this is the, where the baseball diamond and aquatics and skate park are. It would be just this larger parcel here, and the larger parcel here, changing those to park P1.
I think that makes sense to do.
Yeah.
So that would be a total of eight changes, including the four on this version and the four proposed today.
Okay. Potentially nine.
Yeah, it would be nine.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Yeah, nine. And there are other properties that, the park across from Gary Queen, for example, it's currently a park, the zoning is still as carried, there is the, that would be?
B2, I believe.
B2 general commercial, so, and so in terms of, is there issue with having some of those existing parks, private parks, being identified as commercial? It's allowed, as I understand, allowed by the code, by right.
Correct.
So there isn't really a conflict there, so if you're wondering about?
In my mind, there's not.
The others.
Because again, park is a permitted use, it's not even a conditional use in the B2 district, so that park can remain, it's not grandfathered, it would be allowed to be continued, enhanced in any way, that would be consistent with the park, without needing to go through any zoning changes.
So those are the changes to the zoning map, anybody else identify anything?
What was our consensus on the, along, between second and third, along the river there, with those? Was it to switch them to R2?
R2.
Except for?
You're talking east or west, the, what, east side?
East side, yeah.
To switch the single-family homes to R2?
Yes.
I think that makes sense, Commissioner, any other?
Yes.
Opposition to that?
So you'll keep, I think there's two apartment buildings?
Yeah.
On that stretch, so we'd keep the two apartment buildings?
R3.
R3.
There's just the condo, do, on the corner.
Yeah, was the condo.
Oh, yeah, and the condo, there's a four-unit condo, that would probably be at R3 as well.
So those three properties. Okay. And then the Maravian Church block, consensus on that one? I think it makes sense to do the same process as there are changes. Again, that's right here.
And it would suggest the properties even across this, across Third Ave, is it?
So you've got opportunities here, and then there's a series of three homes, I believe?
Right.
And then there is one home here, and then there is a vacant lot right there. Planner and you tells you to do what, then it's commercial, because they're almost contiguous with commercial activity there?
I mean, I have less concern with those being commercial than I do the Maravian block, there's nothing about the Maravian block that is commercial. And that your opportunities is, you have a vacant lot there, it's adjacent to another parking lot.
Sure.
If there is gonna be a transition to commercial there, that's where we'd like the occur.
Okay. All right, so just speaking to the Maravian block, having the church as institutional, is that what your thought Adam was?
If we're gonna make that change, that would make more sense than going back to a residential.
And the rest of the properties being a single-family?
R1.
R2.
So if we're on the other side of the river, we just talked about, there's the UCC church that is?
Oh, yeah.
So if we're gonna do, switch one church, we gotta switch the other church?
Yeah. What's fair for one, is fair for both?
Well, the churches are allowed, I mean, I guess?
So that's the other?
If, I mean, if the intent that you're going to change everything to what it is, or is it, if it's a permitted or a conditional use now, or, I mean, under the religious land use, it's?
Fellow worship.
Committed, I mean, I guess, like, let's say the Maravian church was moving, or what, what would that, what would that be? It wouldn't be?
Sure.
It could only be, I mean, an institutional use, and would that, I guess I'm just thinking more?
That's a good point.
It'll change every church, but I, I don't know, I mean, I guess I'm just bringing that up.
Yeah, worship facility is only allowed in B1, B2, I1, and B5, so it is not allowed in an R2 district, either by permitted or conditional use.
So it has to be commercial or institutional, basically?
Again, assuming you want them to continue.
At, at one point in time, we did allow a lot of those, you know, civic kind of uses, daycares and so on and so forth, churches in the R1, R2, and the residential districts as a conditional use. But then with Act 67, then we said, well, let's take a step back and think about a different strategy, and that's why we created that institutional district, and that's where we put the churches, along with the commercial districts.
But in those neighboring districts where if it weren't a church, what would you propose it be developed or occupied by? I can see that point, right, favor commercial, and probably those two instances, given the location of them.
So maybe we could keep the church lot as commercial?
Well, I mean, basically, if, if, if the church or, you know, s, school were to go on business or whatever, move, you know, then they, they would look at the future land use map, they wouldn't, you know, come back in with a proposal to rezone the property to, you know, B1, B2, or, or some commercial, and that way you have the ability to control it, and they have the ability to propose some transition.
So it's not saying it has to remain?
Correct.
Institutional in the long term?
Yeah, right. So the name of the other church across the river?
UCC.
First Congregational.
Okay.
United Church.
And then Veterans Park was that last question, whether or not we want to keep a portion zone commercial, or if we should show all of Veterans Park as P1. And again, that's basically the south part, kind of the main part where Lunch by the River occurs.
Any issue with?
I recommend P1.
Opposition to that?
Power, commissioners?
All right.
So did we? Do we want to have any last discussion on how the lines have morphed over the meetings for this downtown, or downtown design district? Because they've morphed, I think, three or four times, without a whole lot of discussion from us.
Right, there was the map that was shared.
Yeah. And so what this represents and what this means.
Yeah, the current proposal, and it summed in nicely, is basically that reflects the Connect Communities district, and that was what was discussed at the public hearing last month. So it does not include anything that is currently not in the Connect Communities focus area, which is kind of our downtown focus area. So that's the only change I have made from the original proposal, which only incorporated B1, and then the change was to basically expand that to that Connect Communities district.
Can you refresh my mind and remind memory on what the Connect Communities is?
Connect Communities is, some people call it Main Street Light, it's a state program through the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. Basically, you, when you submit an application to become a Connect Communities, you provide a focus area, that this is what we see as our core downtown area, this is where we're gonna concentrate our efforts in. So in that application, that's where this district came from. Other than that, there's no regulations tied to the Connect Communities program, it's, it's completely voluntary. The reason we're a member of it is it provides us access to the Main Street people at the state level, so if we have questions or we're looking for expertise, they're available because we're a Connect Community, and there are certain training opportunities for staff or community members to go to. So that's really what it boils down to. And again, there are no regulations tied to being a Connect Communities.
But in a sense, this could be our way of saying, okay, we are focusing on this as an economically viable, and we now have, you know, there's associations that will help make this viable.
Right, and the overlay district, the intent behind it is that it's a cohesive looking or feeling district, that's why you have the overlay, and so even if it's zoned something differently, you're hoping that the design standards are similar, and that it does try and tie it together, so that's why, I guess, that discussion was had, on whether or not it made sense to expand that outside of just the B1 zoning.
Just wanted to make sure that we were all knowing why these lines changed.
Thank you.
Very good point.
You were gonna say something?
So, was it to my understanding that we're going to leave the church as a commercial, right, on the, on the west side, on Second Avenue? Because we have a sign?
Yeah, I guess.
Where we're gonna leave that part commercial, and then the rest of the block, the?
R1 or R2?
R2.
R2. Again, it's up to the commission if you wanna show that as institutional, or if you wanna, the long-range plan does show it as commercial.
Yeah.
So again, to Tim's point, if the church were to vacate that building and someone wanted to redevelop it, they would have to just apply for a rezoning to the commercial at that time. The advantage to that is there are fewer uses in the? The advantage to that is there are fewer uses in the institutional district. So it's more likely that they would pursue that rezoning, which would give the council and the planning commission the opportunity to basically weigh in on that redevelopment.
Whatever we do need to do this in, because the Moravian church property is directly adjacent to commercial property.
Right.
And the UCC church is directly adjacent to commercial property. And so we need to treat them the same.
That makes sense.
They're, but they're that one, they're one parcel between commercial and residential.
Right. And at least if you're looking for my thoughts on it, which you probably aren't because I talk all the time. But since this is the existing zoning map, it's more likely to reflect the current uses that are out there. So in that case, it makes more sense as an institutional district on the map. Again, your long-range plan is where you show, okay, maybe it's not viable for a church to be there 30 years from now. And so that's why you would show it potentially as commercial on that map versus this map.
And our consultant's recommendation was?
With regard to the churches?
Yeah, the churches.
I1.
I1.
Yep.
I think it should be I1.
I think that's what we scheduled. Why don't I write it in a minute? That would be even better.
Yep.
May I ask a question about the overlay districts and the changes in terms of what that would comprise, the changes referenced? How would those institutions or businesses that are now in the overlay district be informed that they are, that that change has been made? Or have they been informed?
Well, I think that's the nature of the whole code, right? That they follow legal publication requirements to the extent that they have to be followed for this process. And I don't know if the consultants can respond to the kind of notification process. Obviously, publication was referenced as when the code will be adopted subsequent, I mean, as the council adopts the code. But is there any comment that you have? I don't think there's any plan to go beyond what is currently required by law to notify individuals of that change.
So just to back up a little bit, essentially, any multifamily institutional uses, commercial and industrial, they have to go through a site plan process regardless, no matter where they are. So it's not just that properties within the overlay district have something unique. The only thing that's unique about it are those development standards to reflect the building character. That's the only thing that's new or different. Okay? You still have to go through the site plan and plan of operation process, so.
And I guess my other understanding is that everything as is proceeds even after this adoption, and it's when they go to change the land use or change something on the building that then.
Correct.
It triggers it, right?
It triggers it.
Yep.
Of course, or otherwise, we could entertain a motion on the proposed zoning map with the nine changes?
Nine.
It would be, like a jump. Basically, adopting the zoning map dated July 17th, 2018, as drafted. And then we can list those additional changes to this map. Okay? So, and this is going to be a group effort here, but essentially, number one is changing Witter Field to P1. Okay? Number two, changing Veteran Park to P1. And then number three, help me out on the terminology, but the Mead Splash Pad Park to P1. Okay? Changing the property for the United Church of Christ to I1, that's number four. Number five is changing the property for the Moravian church to I1. And then the last one, number six, are for those properties along the river between Second and Third. I'm not sure if that's Avenue or Street.
Street.
Changing those properties along the river between Second and Third Street that are currently single-family to R2. And then the others are going to just be R3, which they are currently right now.
There is a lot more. And that would be the rest of that Moravian church block would be changed to R2. So that would be.
So number seven.
Moravian church block.
Yeah, I don't know how else to refer to it, but it's.
As long as we all understand that.
Again, this block, so the church would be institutional here, and then the rest of this would be.
To Chase.
R2.
The only question is, I thought we would settle on commercial for the churches? Or did I mishear that conversation?
No.
No.
We're going to keep them as, we're going to.
Change them to institutional.
Correct.
We are going to change it to institutional.
Okay.
Despite the future land use map showing them as commercial.
Correct.
Based upon the desire to have the zoning process occur if there's a change in here.
Okay.
Are we splitting out with adoption of the map and then of the ordinance, or is it?
Yeah, I think we'll do them separately.
Yeah.
There may be some discussion on those items here. So I entertain a motion on the map for starters. With the proposed changes.
Changes.
The map dated July 17th with the proposed changes.
I make a motion that we adopt the map with the current changes.
Motion by Wesley.
Just to clarify, maybe a recommendation to the common council?
Oh, yeah.
For a recommendation to the common council.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll stop. Second wave, Tao? Further discussion. Further discussion. All in favor, stick them up by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. That leaves us with the new zoning code as the other components of this discussion. Any recommendations on how we approach this for either Adam or the consultants?
Well, yeah. I guess it depends if you're okay with all the changes that were presented to you. That's a very simple motion. And it's basically to approve the changes as presented in the lines through copy from the memo dated July 11th. If there are items outside of that, that you, I guess you can pull out other items that you don't agree with. Might be the cleanest, just pull out the ones you don't agree with, make the motion on the remainder, and then go back to the individual changes? Or is that too confusing?
I think that makes sense.
You start with the consent area consensus. Or actually, maybe probably.
So we want to just see, try for consensus first on the citizen appointment number? Because there really wasn't any other.
Beyond the one?
Beyond the one.
Beyond the one. So leaving it at the one? Is that what you're?
I think, I would agree with two.
Commissioners?
Agree.
No problem. Okay. So we would oppose to adopt that edit.
And must it, not to confuse the issue, but do you want to be adding parking rec back as a voting number or not? Although that's not a change presented in this draft and all that's discussed.
Yeah, it was discussed. I guess I, for one, support leaving the planning commission relationship out of this. I think we can retain the, I mean, that's probably a question from a, from a.